You can move one up next to mom if you want to dad.
That's not that heavy. Is this gonna be a walk back or?
I don't think so.
The news in there?
We're getting.
Okay, have a good time.
All their kids are probably too old for you to know. Jen lives around the corner from you guys and she has one son and he's older, yeah? I'm going to school this morning, like it's gonna be raining when you get home. Email yesterday, I'm like, wear pants, it's so cold out and then it was like ninety by the time she got out of.
Oh, it was hot.
Sorry, it was so hot.
Tomorrow's the uh fourth grade spring fling tomorrow night, but it's supposed to be rainy, but we'll see.
I hope the weather holds up. Is it all like inside or is there?
They always do it in the spring at COH because they don't have that much room on the inside as they do at the other schools. So um they'll just utilize what they can and it's a busy weekend too because it's Mother's Day.
True.
And between like Little League and everything else, I don't, you know.
Yeah.
Who knows?
This is your last fling?
That's my last fling.
We're on the countdown. I know and I feel like this part of the year just goes like so fast, there's so much going on.
Third grade went pretty fast for me.
Third grade? The whole year went really fast.
Who'd you have for third grade?
Uh, I had Mr. Gilf and she had a baby.
Yep. That's who Lucas had and Mr. Gilf, well, both of them had Mr. Gilf.
Yep.
Fourth grade, you'll be like a senior next year.
Oh, she can't wait.
Well, this is funny, what was it Christmas happened, they did the caroling in the school? They had like the fourth graders were on the one staircase and the third, I was like, look at this, like, look out.
And the fourth grade, they just seem so mature, I don't know, they look like little teenagers already, I'm like, I can't imagine this.
That gets me like choked up, the the caroling, it's just.
I cried last year, I think at the last day of school, because I'm just like, it's so sweet, I don't know.
I never cried on the first, any first day of schools and then Kayden's last day of school at COH, I cried.
And I cried for all of it.
Me and Phoebe cried all the time at the end of the school year.
Yeah, you guys were pretty sadly, there was Mrs. Burke last year.
Oh, Mrs. Burke is awesome.
Yeah, but you still got to see her, right? See her in the hallway.
She's my favorite.
You think so?
I never had her, but she's pretty, she sounds great.
She sounds great. We'll see, maybe Kayden will get her next year.
It's only fair. So much. So, we're gonna do it.
So far, you're being very well behaved, I'm appreciating. You'll get these after.
I can use. How about ice cream? If we get the bull back, if we get the honey wedge wise, and I'm celebrating.
Yeah.
Say we can get a bull.
That's how we celebrate.
I always forget about toppings, last night Grace had a concert at the at the high school and we're as close as I eat, so. Eight. Eight luck, it's still laid out.
I think it closes at eight here too, Shayanna closes at eight, it's funny because.
Still laid out and it's close, I guess the weird has enough money, but I always forget about toppings, because I'm like, where the heck are we going, Stuart's?
That's such a good thought, yeah, Carrie's older one, uh Kevin was in the play at Willow and we went to toppings after and same thing, we got there and I'm like, oh, we never think of this place.
Never.
But it's great, yeah, like it's really good.
I got a lot.
But good to know they're open so late.
Types of ice creams there, and a lot of toppings.
Too much, you got too many.
Then I eat like half percent of it and it's thrown out. Because then a friend went there, because I guess like they went to like a private show or something. It's the charm on my bracelet.
Oh, yeah.
So um, we got there and then I just started running around instead of eating and forgot all about the ice cream.
That's her. He has to use pliers to close it so it's tighter.
Pliers on that tiny thing?
Yeah, but when it's on the bracelet, it'll tighten it so it won't come off.
Yeah, put it behind. Play the drums, sing a song, do whatever you want.
Play the drums.
Doesn't?
Everyone's trying to play it all on the way. I said, I want that.
You know, one of those blow up ones. Maybe with a slide.
We've had one of those the last couple of years. They just don't really shrink down after you empty them.
What?
That blow up, well, we had it last year. Last year or the year before.
Because then we had that big little thing. And you got some fire in the way.
It was like a sprinkler, a big one?
Oh, that's when you got that on the, the slippers by that's when you got some fire in it.
Quinn, you know, where are your sweatshirts backwards on TV this whole time?
Do you guys have something nice planned for mommy for Sunday?
I do.
You do?
I might, I may.
He came out of school today, like, can't open anything, I was like, I won't. It's supposed to rain though, right? I think it's supposed to be like from me.
I already told you one thing and it's a coupon book.
Oh, yeah.
So, you can take a coupon book out to the chore. But there's one chore, there's two chores that you could write in and one of them, I get to sleep in their bed for a month.
I was like, oh, that's an interesting one.
Mom, we can do other week of your party.
Maybe daddy could slip upstairs with you for a while.
No, because I go down, I get to sleep in your bed.
What kind of coupon is that for me?
I get to rent the coupon, what do you think I'm gonna choose, take up Charlie's poop for a week? Ridiculous. He wanted a turtle.
Self-contained, right?
I want a bunny.
Oh, Charlie was chasing a bunny this morning.
I saw the bunny the other day.
There was no chance he was gonna catch it, it came out of uh.
Yeah. Could, if you got bunny, you would have to keep me in the front. Key, you normally put the tray out and you sprinkle grass and they cut up carrots and it's.
We did, there was a turtle in there.
Remember last year the turtle?
Last year, me and Key were playing badminton in um the front yard, no, the driveway. And Key left to get water for us and he looked at the garage and he seen this little thing, just walking, just walking. It's snapping for a row, just walking. It's snapping, it like, I kind of petted it, it's neck and it's like.
We have a lot of fox in our neighborhood, a lot of fox, yes. Hey Jen?
My god, you brought your dessert? Wait, do I have to sit in the end one?
No, you don't have to, I'm sorry, I just kind of, I didn't remember.
Oh wow, you really did bring your dessert.
Dinner.
You couldn't wait till after. Where'd you get it from?
They just uh, two hours, first one's gotta get quiche for the road.
The keys for what?
Quiche for the road.
Oh. What's in Pittsburgh?
Uh, Eden, our older son's getting his mask, he's gonna be tomorrow, so.
Oh, sweet, graduation?
Yeah.
Nice.
Oh, we are going, okay, I have zoning board available, Thursday night.
Yeah, wow, seven thirty, seven thirty?
Does not seem too controversial.
Little dessert.
They'll put it later.
No, it doesn't. Um, oh, well, congrats, your son is graduating, University of Pittsburgh?
Carnegie Mellon.
Carnegie Mellon.
So how are you doing?
I'm good. Same old. I was thinking of you during the eclipse, did you go to your uh, the Adirondack House?
We did, oh, sure, yes, we did, oh.
And was it clear and?
You did, hold on.
Okay, yeah, I went to Plattsburgh.
Oh, did you see it from there?
Yeah, yeah. Great, yeah, looks similar.
Right through it. Try to speed it up for you, but yeah, so you're up in.
Oh, you filmed it right toward the end, yeah, yeah, it was amazing. Oh, good, and you had a clear view, oh, yeah, wow, that's really dark.
Yeah, it did got a little dark. I didn't have, this was someone else with us who had like the right app for her phone, because mine just, you know, brightened and everything and.
Yeah.
But yeah, it was really cool.
No, yeah, it like made my whole year, it was great. It was exhilarating, there was, the birds were freaking out, they were like flying in all different directions and it looked like they were gonna crash into us, like they were blaming us for it. Like, what's going on, you humans, what have you done?
But you could sit there with everybody, everyone around us, like forty eight people up there on this cliff.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, that we were watching it from, and we were all doing the same thing, you can see why medieval people freaked out.
Yeah.
How many more people did we need to sacrifice to bring your son back?
They thought like.
Throw a few more on the fire, you know, or whatever it was.
They probably thought they were all going to hell or something.
Steve, how are you?
Not bad, yourself?
Good.
Just up at the Little League fields, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Yep, working the concession stand, doing my part. Oh, yeah.
Do you live on Paige jeans?
What's that, I do.
Ah, those are my favorite, I do too.
Got the stretch, I love the str- I love the extra stretch.
Those are the best jeans I've ever found in my whole life.
I have a few pair of them.
I wear the same pair like, well, the same two pairs all week, like every week.
Now that we can wear, same thing, just rotate them.
Yeah.
Until I start to fade, I get a new pair.
I kind of like when they fade, I'm like, I wish they would rip out in the right places, instead of like in my ass or something, yeah. You know, coming to these meetings, I'm like, I gotta buy like some more professional clothing, because this is the only colored shirt I think I own. Or get some nice blouses like Janelle. Oh, cool.
Yeah, like, you're always su- you're always suited up, huh?
Try to be intimidating.
Are you ever dressed down at work?
Uh, no.
No, you're always.
Yeah. I mean, on a rare event, so like, last weekend, so last Thursday night, we had gala, so folks kind of came in late and were a little more casual. Friday morning and um, we were going up to Saratoga afterwards anyway, so. This is what I wore, I wore the same thing.
This is dressed down?
Yes, yeah, this is dressed down.
Cool, yeah, that would be dressed up for me.
I see Kevin.
So you're a hospital administrator?
Yeah.
I already asked you this, I'm sure, not, you're not actually practicing medicine?
I do, I still practice. I mean, it's not a full volume, probably stretching, you know, in terms of patient. Saw a couple of patients in ER today before I left, so that.
Psych?
Yeah.
Psych, yeah, okay.
Sounds like a behavioral ER.
It's our regular ER, but you know, it's, you know, justifying the need to continue.
You may not make it.
So that's okay?
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, he can't make it. Unless the chairman gets all serious, you know.
Hey, Kevin.
How was everyone?
Good.
Were you just up at the ball field?
I was, I had to watch my, someone was just getting up.
Oh, oh, you left the Little League field too?
He was on the uh, Pirates, Pirates, uh, and I saw your boy made a, two consecutive great plays in shortstop. Alright, uh, John's not here this evening.
And Matt is not.
Oh, hey, okay, what are you doing here?
I'm substituting, I guess, gonna try to figure out how to use this uh, I'll use my phone as a backup and their live stream is already on.
Okay.
Because they were having issues, this can be came in.
So many people watching it.
No, Matt, no, he's out.
Call an order, the Cornwall and Hudson zoning board of appeals meeting, May ninth, two thousand twenty four. We have one item on the agenda today, that is an application for an in-ground swimming pool at four Homeland Avenue. Uh, Robert Borland is applicant and property owner for area variances from section one, seven, two, dash forty-three C of the village zoning code. Do a laugh for the construction of an in-ground swimming pool with a side yard setback of five feet, when the code requires thirty feet. And a rear yard setback of ten feet, when the code requires thirty feet. Uh, the applicant would like to uh, introduce your application, just uh, state your, even though we, we know, uh, state your name and address, please.
Uh, Robert Borland, four Homeland Avenue. Yes, we are applying to for a building permit at sixteen by thirty in ground. In the side yard location, down our property in the southwest corner. Property dimensions, the non-conforming property, uh, we're applying for setback variances of five feet to five by.
Alright. Um, so let's see, you're, you have a corner lot at the corner of Homeland and Gene Court. Um, just trying to get bearings on um, where the application is going, so you have, uh, where's the front, is the front of your house on? Okay.
Uh, so the pool actually, you know, it's a corner lot, the pool will be the furthest location from the corner.
Yep.
That it's actually there, it'll be in the, in the far corner of the southwest. So we do have three adjacent properties, uh, you know, neighbors there that, you know, we currently really don't have a whole lot of privacy from whether landscaping or fencing in there, um, you know, we feel like this is some unused property, it's kind of there, uh.
Yeah.
You know, underdeveloped, underutilized, um, would desire to kind of maybe add some more of a backyard, side yard feel to the property, raise the property value. Give some of that privacy to all, you know, adjacent neighbors. I just feel like the, the project in its totality will, you know, raise the overall value of the area and raise the property, uh, you know, looking feel. And then ultimately be, you know, a value add, I think for our family, that's the little ones that, uh, you know, we've been in the village for, for twelve years. Uh, we love the house, you don't really plan on moving, so it's, it's, we're just gonna do some upgrades and kind of make it our.
In Collins, there's no um, trees or landscaping there, the, the plan is to put that up after the pool goes in.
Yeah, there's, there's so small, um, shrubs in the backyard, um, so that, so the design would really obviously, you know, fence in the pool location and then put some, um, herbivorous type trees, privacy up on the one side location next to uh, the Finch property.
Yep.
And then on the front facing Homeland, do some more professional landscaping with, you know, some hydrangea type stuff like that, just to, you know, take a close over.
Pools are common or not common over there in backyards?
Um, I would say they're common, there's a handful in the property, uh, I think most uh, dimensions in that area are pretty tight. So it probably limits the ability to, to do it. You know, we, we kind of initially even looked at it, if, you know, we had the ability to maybe do it in the backyard, it's, it's the same sort of issue, right? We just have the same setback problem with all this application, um, so it felt like the right fit and that's the best design application.
Okay. Have you had any conversations with your neighbors who are on, on either side of you?
Yep, actually all three of them. Quite a process, kind of going through it, uh, you know, the, the Finch is actually new neighbors who are, they, they, they moved in about six months ago, uh, December, December. I know they would, they, so their backyard actually faces that location, so it's, it's, thanks to the times.
And how about um, outside of the pool, any hardscaping?
Yep, so outside of the pool, the perimeter of it blocks the landscape and that's the landscape, we do, we finish work on that. Extended into the backyard, we currently have, um, a deck there that was pretty neat when we bought and it's, you know, pretty rough shape, so it needs to come down anyway.
Yeah.
Pretty brought it out, so the uh, you know, the design to really remove that and then extend the paperwork into what now is in our backyard, um, just kind of flow that way.
I'm just wondering, the um, the side that's closest to, I guess it'd be the to west on Homeland, your, the Finches, uh, it looks like there's, that's kind of like the tightest dimension, there's only five, is it five feet? Is that, you're, you're gonna have a perimeter, uh, either concrete or hardscape all the way to the property line there?
So that, so there's five feet to the actual property line, um, which current, the current fencing right there has about a, it's actually two point nine feet. It's got a three foot space on the property line to where their fence line is, um, so the, the request for the variance is, is to have five feet from the pool line to that property line. Um, which then from there, we would, we would put in sort of, you know, some trees, privacy.
Mm-hmm.
In that, it's just like, you know, sort of a mutual barrier, perimeter between both our property lines and the existing fence already placed. So the tree line would be on our side of the fence.
Mm-hmm.
So it wouldn't change any of their current property level, it would actually keep them, so privacy.
I'm just wondering how, how tight that is, if you have five feet and then there's gonna be a fence and then landscaping or trees, bushes, whatever.
It'll be a very narrow from a paver standpoint, like where the, the pool, it's really just a walking location. The, the design was really to have more area on the side where the garage is located, and to be able to put, you know, sort of lounge chair, anything that you wanted to actually utilize.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I just, I just, it's, the, the tight, I've looked on, I was asking about the pools, because I looked on Google and, and did the, the visual search and there's several properties that have a similar arrangement of their pool abutting the property line. Now, it's difficult to tell from a satellite view, whether it's five feet or seven feet, but it's still a very, it's very narrow. You know, when you look on, you know, the way it lays out on the grids, you know, Googling. That's the question I have. Yeah, it's a lot of stuff right there. But it's consistent, it looks out, yeah, okay. Let's see, the pool itself is, let's head on here, it's um, sixteen by thirty. Were there any options, did you look at any options for having like a, a smaller pool?
So with the space that we have there, it's basically thirty feet, so regardless of what we put in, um, it's pretty much, you know, gonna need any sort of setback variance, so by kind of needing to go through that process, the sixteen by thirty maximizes the property that's there, gives us the best fit deal for what we have. Again, it's just, it's just kind of an odd lot, the way the property is designed, where if you do that thirty feet in the backyard and you have a tree there that, you know, we don't necessarily wanna have to cut down or even ask, you know, you know, the neighbor to prune them back, so it's kind of an open space that's underutilized, just from a design layout. You know, the thirty feet dimension, um, was the sh- was the shortest we could go from a lengthwise in order to get the steps actually within the pool. Rather than having the add-on feature, um, so that's really kind of the smallest we could go from a dimension standpoint.
I see, if you go any shorter, the steps have to be kind of outside of that.
Steps on the outside, um, so you have to kind of have those smaller three steps in with thirty feet in length, you can actually have them on the length of the sixteen feet width.
Okay, so that's, I mean, it could go smaller, but it wouldn't really be.
It wouldn't really buy anything, because then you're probably gonna chew up, you know, that's a two feet by putting this additional.
Yeah. Uh, how about the uh, pool equipment, where is that uh, gonna be located?
Yep, so the pool equipment is designed to be, uh, on the, if you, I guess if you're looking at the house and looking at the property on the front side, kind of. Where that tree line will kind of all be, so it'll get, it'll kind of get buried into that corner with, with privacy, landscaping. And, you know, really to start with that herbivorous tree line, that's gonna be.
Yeah. Uh, was there any, so it's gonna be, I'm looking, the equipment's gonna be over here, close to the property line? Is there, uh, was there any uh, possibility of moving it either in the garage or building a little enclosure attached to the garage?
So the garage inside itself wouldn't allow for that, um, the other option that we thought of was to put it in kind of the same spot, in the back corner, but then you have the same issue, now you're up against both property lines in that back right corner, um, so it's really kind of pick or choose which one, I, I think either direction.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of up against, up against that five foot sort of setback line. Yeah, it's pretty narrow behind the garage too, to kind of put it there, so we think we'd walk it up the gate to the fence, uh, behind the garage on that side. So if we kind of put it there, you're gonna be walking, kind of right into it, it's pretty narrow. So from just a, a design standpoint, you know, to be able to sort of mask it and hide it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the only place you can really put it.
Yeah.
Put it in that other corner, but then you're bucking up against, you're like, all three properties are right there.
Exactly, it's one way, they, they put it in the, in the back corner and kind of up against two property lines or kind of get it up front, you know, on our side.
And where is the, the, the Finch's house, is that uh, is it close to the property line, is it?
So their backyard is really what's on the property line, their, their house is right on Academy.
Okay.
I live right there, they have a pretty good sized backyard.
So they're pretty far from.
They probably have thirty, thirty, forty feet of backyard property.
And then there's a fence going around it, that is how, fifty-four inch high fence. And maybe that uh, lines with, that's up to code, fifty-four inches high for a, around a pool.
A far as the fence, yes, that would be up to code, yes.
And they could put it right on the property line?
It could be right on the property line, that is correct.
It could be right on the property line, that is correct.
How about one thing, I, I don't know how much you know about this, but on the drawing, you have uh, there's a dotted line. For proposed drainage, is that a subgrade drainage line?
So that is just directionally where the drain, where the pool will drain, um, we actually have a self-hump. On that side of the property, which is a storm drain at the corner of Homeland and Gene Court, um, kind of like Michael's house, his house is right. Kind of right on that one, um, so actually all those properties, all of their kind of self-hump will drain into that side on two hundred and four. So directionally, that's what the dotted line is, is really giving.
It's a flow on the surface of your, of the lawn?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out if we got a ten inches of rain and a hurricane, it's not gonna flood the street.
Yep.
Does anyone from the audience have anything they'd like to add?
Uh, one other thing that I had a concern with was not, was not showing the plan, but it's not a big deal, we could do it here, is with lighting. Wanna make sure what type of lighting you're gonna use in that pool, if any?
Yeah, it's gonna be low landscape lighting, kind of on the ground, there's nothing to be sort of raised above, that would be spotlighting, shining, so you know, anyone's. Certain areas would be, be more low landscape lighting.
Nothing like a mounted on the garage. Okay, does anyone have anything they've left to add? Okay, um, so we usually, uh, we uh, evaluate all applications on the basis of five criteria. Uh, the first of which is uh, the impact on the neighborhood, uh, local environment. Even though, even though it's, it's uh, it is. Tight within the, the neighboring properties, uh, it doesn't really seem to be, uh. The placement is not going to have a large effect on the neighboring properties, not uh, right next to someone's house. Uh, there don't seem to be any lights that are going to be uh, shining into someone else's backyard. Uh, doesn't really seem to be drainage that's going to affect anyone's yard. Seems it's not gonna affect anyone's view. Uh, it's pretty non uh, non effective. Uh, then we, I don't have.
Hold on a second, hold on, I got it, I got it, here we go, pull it up.
There we go.
Whether the uh, benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method.
Yes, uh, so whether it can be achieved by some other method, um, it seems like you've done a, a pretty thorough job of. Kind of finding other places in the yard, uh, to put the pool, uh, investigating uh, the size of the pool, if it could be smaller. Uh, even though it could likely be smaller, it may not really have much of an effect on uh, the impact. Doesn't seem to have any ill effects on the, the neighboring properties. Uh, and then whether the requested variance is substantial, uh, I think we would uh, argue that it. It is rather substantial, uh, it's, you know, it's uh, taking the uh, setback from. Was it thirty feet down to five feet, uh, which is pretty significant, uh, I think, uh, given. Uh, the atypical nature of the lot, that's a corner lot, uh, it's kind of, has kind of a, it's a little difficult to fit things in there. It's not your typical uh, village lot, uh, I think that um, kind of mitigates that a bit. Uh, neighboring properties are also corner lots, so they're set back from, from the property line. So I think even though it is substantial, it uh, is not very impactful. Uh, and then uh, the other criteria is whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Uh, it's similar to what we discussed before, it doesn't seem to be uh, ruining anyone's backyard or their ability to enjoy the property. Uh, it doesn't affect any views, uh, lighting, uh, and then whether the so, the alleged difficulty uh, was self-created. Uh, this is, it was self-created, it was your idea to. Put a pool here, uh, just in light of the other criteria, we're not uh, going to put a tremendous amount of uh, weight on, on that issue. So fame would like to.
I move that we approve the variance.
One other, we, we haven't closed it yet, just, uh, we just have to enter this in the record. There was a, because of your proximity to uh, county land, uh, the application went to the Orange County Department of Planning. Uh, and their recommendation was that it is uh, up to local determination, which means that we can uh, render a decision. Uh, and then also, Orange County Department of Planning, uh, it's a secret act. And uh, it's a secret type. Two. Yes, um, okay, it's proofed.
I know, right? I'll prove it if we can borrow it when you're away.
Uh, and then. Motion to close public. We need to approve the minutes from uh, Thursday, March fourteenth.
Oh, you're not gonna stay? I mean, you're gonna stay overnight.
Sovac office conversion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve.
Approve, second?
Approve. Okay. Motion to close.
Thank you.
How do you do?
Is this your first meeting?
Kristen's uh, the.
I brought the um, other letters. Jonathan sent that needed to be signed, you wanna just sign in here and participate with Jonathan?
Unless you wanna come to see me, really, I've got, oh, thank goodness.
I like the fact that, that's like the uh, the hourglass.
This is dinner, man, this is my dinner, enjoy the game, get back there.
Yeah, they're probably still going.
Now we're headed out, we're, we're on our way out of town.
We're heading to Pittsburgh.
Pittsburgh, she just didn't, didn't, wasn't dying to see you in that.
No, it's not that, it was more you. Actually, she's a, she's, she's for uh, town in Windsor now, she's the attorney. She just kinda wants to know how it works and.
Yeah.
Everybody's were driving here, they're like. Yeah, it's like, oh yeah, Jonathan's not gonna be there, so you only get to see the attorney side of.
We could have had her sit in.
Exactly. Sub swap. I'm sorry I missed the last meeting, that was a.
Yeah, that was a. Yeah, we were like uh, gonna try to.
The heartstrings get pulled, I'm gonna dump this at the drive, so take care.